Well, I told her once, I said, "Pat, you know I'm retired." She said, "John, I don't feel this is the only one that can fix this."
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, June 15th, and this is a Moscow City Council regular meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dan, Big Dan here for a second.
Everybody, please join me in the council for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
And we will move on to item number one, which is a consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dan and a second by Wayne to approve the consent agenda as is. I will start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to item number two, which is Staff Recognition Report. Gary, do you have anything for us, sir?
Good evening, sir. Summer's a little slow.
Okay. And we're not even in the dog days of summer yet, but it is kind of slow, which is kind of nice because if folks can finish up working on the budget that we'll be spending some time on next month. Okay, item number three, Public Comment in the Mayor's Response Period. Anybody can get up in front of us and speak on whatever they would like, as long as it is not on the agenda tonight in something that is not in front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustments. If you do decide to speak, you just need to state your name and address for us. Seeing that, I am going to move on to item number four, which is a Request for Beer and Wine Garden, presented by Rod.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Pat Greenfield, the applicant, the owner of Boozer's, is requesting you guys to pass a resolution tonight. That resolution before you tonight concerns a request from the applicant to be allowed to sell beer and wine in a beer garden located in Main Street on the 26th day of June this year during a community event that they are sponsoring. The applicant already has a permit for the street closure, which is set to take place. The closure is from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 26th. Under Moscow City Code 10-1-12, it prohibits the possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages on public streets or public right-of-way, except in accordance with specific regulations adopted by the council in a resolution. Just a little over a month ago, this same resolution basically was before you, and it was approved for this, for an event, but that event was canceled due to the weather. That resolution, the council deliberated and limited the selling of the beer and wine between the hours of 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Now, if this resolution is approved in conjunction with the street closure, the applicant would have between the hours of 6:00 to 7:00 to do the setup. The event would happen between 7:00 to 10:00, where the music would be able to play, and she would be allowed to sell beer and wine in the beer garden. And then if it was to close at 10:00, they would have from 10:00 to 11:00 to do the teardown. The issue of, I think the applicant had asked to have the music go to 11:00. The council has addressed it before, but as the council knows, that our noise ordinance changes significantly after 10:00 o'clock. The noise has to be reduced a lot because a lot of people are in the process of going to bed or already in bed. So that's a resolution before you.
Okay, and with that being said, Ms. Greenfield did have a resolution for a prayer event that was canceled because of inclement weather, and so we'll move on with that in discussion. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rod, just so I'm clear, the street closure has been handled by staff. We have set up the process whereby that is administratively handled?
Yes, we did that a little over, or within the last couple of months, we set up the street closure policy in neighborhood block parties.
So the council does not need to take any action on that tonight?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're only dealing with the beer and wine resolution.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I would make a motion that we approve the request for the beer and wine use between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00, and also that the band be required to cease music at 10:00 p.m.
I would second that.
Okay. We've got a motion by Walter and a second by Jim Boland to approve the recommendation from 7:00 to 10:00. One thing we did not discuss is the use of two police officers, as we did on the previous event.
I would include that as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So that would be...
Two police officers paid for by the applicant.
Okay.
Isn't that in the resolution?
It's, well, it's something that needs to be put in the motion, too. Jim, will you approve that as a second?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Okay, so what we have is we've got a motion by Walter, a second by Jim, to recommend authorization to be limited from 7:00 to 10:00 for drinking, and security be provided by two police officers during this, and that all beer and wine regulations be observed. Sound good?
The police officers paid for by the applicant.
That's correct.
And that the music cease at 10:00 p.m.
Yep, and that is in the resolution. Discussion? Thanks, Council.
The only thing I might add, Mr. Mayor, is that this is the same process that was used when the music festival up at the East City Park started. And at that time, the council required that the people that put that on also use Moscow City Police to be around and paid for. After a couple, three years, I'm not sure exactly how long it took, with virtually no problems, then the city council said that it would be fine if Rendezvous in the Park were to provide their own security. I would think that this type of thing that Boozer's is putting on would probably fall under a similar type situation, although that is, we're still a couple of years away from that.
Okay. Other conversation before I do a roll. Okay, John, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, Pat, you got it. Five to zip. Have a nice evening. Now, we'll move on to item number five, Proposal Records and Management Electronics Record Ordinance, and Rod will present on this one as well.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're talking about a new chapter under Title I. We're talking about the addition of a new chapter, 10, dealing with electronic records management. Governments' written work is becoming more and more computer-based and digitized. Computers and digital records are important communication tools for conducting private business and as well as doing the public's business. Most government agencies use some form of digital format to transfer official documents. You've all received emails before with official documents attached to them. City staff are in the process of implementing a new citywide records management system to help expedite government business communications. This will also help reduce and perhaps eliminate a lot of paperwork. The overall goal is to move more city records online for more efficient access and storage. But in order to be able to do that, we have to have assurances that users will be able to access the documents when they want them and be able to produce and reproduce, produce and reproduce the printed copies when they need them. We also need to ensure that we can prevent the destruction or the corruption of the electronic data. Idaho Code allows cities to use digitized records for official public business as long as safeguards are put in place to make sure records are not destroyed or lost, and the public has the ability to access those records. Authority for the cities to utilize electronic records are found under Idaho Code Title 50, Chapter 908, which designates the power and responsibilities of municipal records management to the city clerk, and also under Idaho Code 50-909, which deals with the retention of city records using photographic and/or digital media, which we are incorporating into the proposed ordinance. Also in this proposed ordinance, city business-related email are specifically addressed, stating that they will be retained for two years, and then they will automatically be removed from the city's exchange server unless it has been determined that they are a record that we need to keep longer, and then we have a process, we'll have a process in place to store them and retain such record as required by law. So this proposed ordinance pursuant to state code allows the city to move forward into the 21st century for electronic records and the management of those records. That's all I have.
Okay, Rod, questions for Rod and Council? John?
Rod, I, after having read this a couple of times, I think that staff has covered everything pretty well, and you have also made it possible for records to be kept longer if necessary, and if not necessary, we only need to hold them for two years. And you've also put in areas where they will physically be stored and safeguarded and kept away from weather, heat, all of that kind of stuff. So I think, I think it's a pretty good deal, and I think we should pass it. I'm all for it.
Wayne?
Well, everything that John said, plus one other thing that I really like about it, Rod, is the fact that if there is a public records request, it's probably going to be easier to find those records now as opposed to going through hard copies and trying to look through different files. So, yeah, I agree with, I agree with what John has said. In fact, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Wayne and a second by John to approve the ordinance under the suspension of rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary. Discussion. Okay, I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so the ordinance is classified as zero, and this is ordinance number 2015-09. Okay. Ordinance number 2015-09, in ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title I by the addition to Chapter 10, to provide records, management, policies, and procedures, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
So be it.
So be it. Well, that will move on, and we're going to go into reports, folks. And tonight, for grins, I'm going to start to my left side because Public Works and Finance met on June 8th, and the admin did not, because of the number, lack of number of things we had to deal with. So Wayne, would you like to start?
I would. And actually, everything that we covered, whether it was on the consent agenda or the other two items tonight, were in fact the entire agenda that we had, other than we had a report on the greenhouse gas results, which, there's some data in there that is interesting, but I think we'll be looking at that a little bit more, and I think the council will probably get a report later on on that. The only other meetings that I had is last week, the Farmers Market Commission met, and there were some comments from folks pertaining to moving the breakfast tables that Bloom puts out around on the north side. So it's kind of the same discussion that they had last year for a variety of different regions, so that'll be looked into. There is an ongoing need for more access to power on the east side of Friendship Square. They redid the power on the west side, but the east side is lacking, and we continue to grow with more requirements, and yes, people that have booths that require power do pay more, you know, for those spaces. So that's something to look into. And then the commission's also going to be looking at the various possibilities of recommending a change in the fee structure for the farmers market. I think Walter had a question.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment regarding Wayne's comments about power at the market. I was, I was down there a week ago Saturday and saw the, saw the quantity of extension cords that they're having to run to try to run the vendors that they have assured we will have power for. They had a problem a week ago, this past Saturday, with some electricity being out. Scott Montrago was down there running a booth, apparently. He was working trying to help them. I didn't hear whether it was a matter of a breaker, a particular receptacle, a GFI, but Gary, it does seem that they're being really challenged with their electrical situation. This was on the east side, Wayne.
It was taken care of. On the, on the west side?
No, he said east.
East. Well, they had a problem on the west side, too, but that was a bad break.
East side was having a problem when I was down there. So Gary, if, if, if you could, you know, maybe get into it and help work with Kathleen and staff about what the issues are and whether or not we've got to look at trying to do some construction to create some more power down there to run this unbelievably successful market we've created.
We'll be talking about it.
Wayne, additional things?
One other thing, I usually limit my comments to the meetings, but I had an interesting situation Friday night when I was, when I parked in the city hall parking lot on my way down to Art Walk Friday night, and another gentleman had parked his vehicle in the parking lot. I hadn't paid a lot of attention to it, and we kind of came together on the sidewalk as we're walking, and he justingly made the comment. He says, "Well, I hope we don't get, we don't get parking tickets parking in the city parking lot." And I said, "No." I said, "I think we'll probably be all right." And he says, "Well," he said, "I hope so." And so I, I gave him one of my city council business cards, and I said, "Well, if you have any problem, let me know." Well, we got to have an interesting conversation about, you know, what he, what he does and how he got here, and he's from California, young guy, about Tyler's age, I suspect, and...
Young in terms of our age between Wayne and myself.
Yeah, exactly. And he's got married with kids, and they lived in California, and they wanted to get out of California. And they did an exhaustive search. They kind of knew the area they wanted to be in, broad area within a number of states, and they ended up in Moscow, and, and he, he did a bunch of research and decided they were going to stay. Well, then Saturday morning, I got an email from him, and he expanded on, on his comments, and I'm going, I would, I'm going to read that email. It's fairly short. He says, "Hi, Wayne, I'm the guy that parked near you at the Art Walk in the city parking lot. I just wanted to touch base and say thank you. Thank you for being kind for the job you're doing for the state, reaffirming our, and reaffirming our choice in selecting Moscow as our town to raise our kids and grow old in. When you asked me how we reached our decision in Moscow, I didn't get to one point, which I wanted to share with you now. After believing Moscow may be the place, I've visited every dive bar, convenience store, and restaurant I could. I chatted it up with every employee I was able to. Many, if not most, had been raised in Moscow or the surrounding area. Regardless of who I spoke with or the circumstances, I could not find one individual, whether tattooed, pierced, disadvantaged, or highly educated, that had anything bad to say about Moscow. With great thought, all thought it was a great place to live. They all believed it was a great place to raise a family. Many had left the area after school only to return as soon as they were able. How refreshing." Anyway, that's all I wanted to add, and he hopes our paths will cross again. So even in light of Moscow being one of the poorest cities in the nation, apparently we're still a great place to live in. So I just, I wanted to share that with everybody. I thought that was really cool.
Pretty neat. Thanks for sharing.
Wayne, I didn't hear. Was he a visitor or a new resident or what?
They've lived here, I think he's, oh, gosh, what did he tell me? A year now, I think.
Where are these dive bars?
Well, let's not get into that, John.
Jim, I'll go with you next.
Due to being in Boise last week, I didn't attend the Transportation Commission meeting, although it didn't occur, so I guess I didn't miss anything. And I understand there was a Pathways Commission meeting, but I could find no minutes for that meeting, so I have no idea what went on with that. I guess I'll have to talk to Tom Grunden and find out what went on, but I don't really have much to report since I was out of town.
Well, when we were down at AIC, one of the work sessions you stopped in and listened to was, they talked about working on streets and stuff, and you and I had a discussion about that, so that was kind of...
Well, yeah, if you wanted to talk about that, we talked about pavement, and since Tyler's here, there was a good presentation from the Public Works Director from Hayden, who made a great presentation about how to stretch the pavement maintenance dollars, you should maintain the better streets first and not do the worst first. You get way more improvement per square yard by maintaining the good streets first and the worst ones last.
Is that a concept you'd ever heard of?
I haven't been, I haven't been used to that for a while.
Anyway, that was good. That was something Jim and I had talked about, I think it was Friday over lunch, but anyway, it was kind of an interesting conversation.
Another thing that happened down there that, with regard to the records, electronic records, there was a presentation by a gentleman at one of the general sessions that they're thinking of making the electronic video records for police body cams and surveillance cameras. If it doesn't involve use of force, a felony arrest, or an ongoing investigation, 60 days for those records, so that we don't have, have to have a giant storage facility for electronic records that, much of which is not public information, anyway.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Jim. John?
Well, I'm in the process of dealing with a small medical issue myself, so I missed the urban renewal meeting, and I missed planning and zoning, and so, and then tomorrow is when the Human Rights, remembered it this time, Commission meets, so I really, somewhat embarrassingly, have nothing to report.
Okay, John. Dan?
Well, Tree Commission met on the second, discussed all their goings-on. One of the more interesting things was talking about food trees and how to, you know, how if the city should have something like that within their right-of-ways, you know, and kind of an urban food forest, you know? So that's, that's something that, some discussion about that. Plus, there was a, a lot of talk about a memorial for Margaret Littlejohn, you know, partnering with the Pathways Commission and having something going on there, you know? She was, she was big in the Tree Commission, she was big in the Path Commission, she was, she was big in a lot of commissions here in town, so folks, folks want to do something to remember her by. And then on the ninth, we had the Arts Commission, which, of course, the big news was Art Walk coming up on Friday, and it sounds like that went off really well. I got a report back from the gourmand in my house, the 20-year-old that still lives under my roof, that said that they had a pretty good barbecue down at the, the water department, so everything went off good there. And other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, Dan. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, June 3rd, I attended the Inland Northwest Partners Summer Meeting over in Pullman at Banyans. Very well-attended, with people representing areas from, oh, I'd have to guess Spokane Valley, which is what, 75 miles north, pretty much about a, you know, 75-mile semicircle around Pullman, a lot of the small towns in Washington attending. The topic was place-based cultural tourism as a sustainable economic development strategy, and unusually this time, they had a single speaker for the entire session, the whole day, a fellow by the name of Stephen Thorne, who is a senior associate of Sustainable Travel International out of Washington, D.C. And his, the very, very short of it is that he says, "Instead of going to Paris to see the Eiffel Tower, go to Paris to see Paris." There's a lot more to it than just the Eiffel Tower, or the Arc de Trump, or, or the, you know, a few things, or the Louvre, but take it in for the entire experience. So that was, that was the Northwest Partners Meeting. On the evening of June 8th, last week ago tonight, I attended the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department Board Meeting as liaison. The chief was out of town, doing some family business, bringing some, some kids back to Moscow to show them what a great place this is, I guess, Wayne.
That's right.
And Joe Williams ran the meeting. Nothing really extraordinary at that, with the exception of some discussion of some needed parking lot repairs at Station 2. I think it's, if I remember correctly, it was to the tune of about $40,000 worth. And Gary, there was some discussion, not a whole lot of confusion, but some discussion about exactly who should be responsible for the cost of what needs to be done. I have a feeling that Dan Carscallen may be talking to you about that. Not looking for money so much as trying to understand the history of how that was all put together and who might be responsible for, and Tyler will get to play also because when they get around to doing the work. So that was the fire department meeting. As Jim Boland said, and as the mayor indicated, several of us attended the Association of Idaho Cities Meeting last week in Boise, and I won't, I won't take it all, I'll leave you some, Mayor. And Gary, if he wishes to speak about it, but a lot of good workshops and a multitude of, of topics. One in particular that, that I attended that I found interesting was the city manager of Twin Falls talking about their, their budget process. And we can visit about that sometimes, Gary. One thing that did happen was the City of Moscow received a city achievement, a youth award, and this, I'd be happy to give to the mayor so he can... I was at the banquet, and I happened to be, I looked around, and nobody else was there from Moscow but Walter, so I took it. But I will give this to the mayor to find an appropriate place to put it, but it's based upon the Moscow School District Community Playfield Project.
Wow.
So we're, we're, if not known worldwide or nationwide, we're known statewide for the ballfields project. So with that, Mayor, I will pass that down to you, and I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Walter, yes.
One other thing.
You got something else?
One other thing I really need to mention, and that is the fact that the Be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp kicked off last night, and for this week. It carries today and Tuesday and Wednesday, and there's 26 folks enrolled in that, and Tuesday night, which I believe, Mr. Mayor, you'll be there, that's the, the main event dinner, and there's, I think we've got close to 100 people that are becoming, coming to that one. And so that's, I'll have some more interesting comments to make after the boot camp is over, but I know that one of the companies that is already enrolled in it, there's three young folks enrolled in the boot camp, that they have already leased space to start manufacturing their product. There'll be more to come on that.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. And Walter, I want to publicly thank Walter for accepting this on Boise State University campus.
Well, let me, let me, I'll tell you what, I don't know if I told you this in...
Yes, you did tell me.
But when, I will, I will say it. When I took it, I told them, "I need to be sure I turn my back to the blue field to take this. No vandals."
Yes, and Walter did say that, and so with that, I really got charged.
It was up in the Stewki Center, which is effectively the press box, a humongous press box at BSU, bigger than Martin Stadiums, with a great area with a lot of view of downtown. It was really, really nice.
Thank you, Walter, very much. Okay, well, a couple of things. On June 2nd, we had a workshop with our county commissioners and this council, myself, with the area city. In fact, we, we chatted about that. It was a nice little meeting. We had a luncheon, we talked about some things. There will be some other things down the road. It'll be more formal, but it was a nice get, get acquaintance with the county commissioners and this council based on area city impact, and it'll be future conversations to come for us. On June 3rd, we had the monthly breakfast at the University of Idaho, and that was in conjunction with city officials as well as university officials and county commissioners, and that was hosted by the university, and they provided our breakfast that morning, which was very kind of them. And then, of course, we had the Newville Safety Fair on June 6th, and that was quite an event. I was there, and...
Well-attended.
Very well-attended. Walter was there as well, and I spent a couple of hours out there, and chief was here earlier tonight, and I got to commend our chief. They gave out 600 helmets, and him and another lady were working diligently handing these out, and I really appreciated the EMTs, or Emergency Responders, as well as the Police Department, County Sheriff Department, as well as State Police, and I talked to every single one of the individuals that were there.
And City of Lewiston Police Department was well-represented in the children's safety seat checks.
Yep. They, that was very well... So it was very neat, very, and that thing just keeps growing every year, and it's, and of course, it was a nice warm day, and man, there were, I don't know how many thousands of people were there, but that was a huge event at the East Side Mall, so with that, that was very, very nice. And of course, as Walter and Jim Boland had indicated, on June 10th, 11th, and 12th, we were down at our AIC Annual Convention in Boise, and that, to me, was a very exciting, very exciting to be a part of that. One of the things for our city, and I went to a commission meeting on Farmers Market, and our Farmers Market is well-represented as the oldest in the State of Idaho, as well as the most recognized. We got kudos from the Boise people that run the Boise Farmers Market, as well as the lady Elizabeth... lady Elizabeth that runs overall Farmers Market throughout the State of Idaho. And we had, it wasn't that it was a huge number of people, there was probably a dozen of us there. Some cities have Farmers Market. There was one city that was starting a new one this year. And then there was a lady that was in her small area south of American Falls that wants to start one next year, and I invited her up so she could get a chance to see what our Farmers Market looks like. And I said, "Come in June, or July and August, when the thing is really bustling with all the fresh, fresh vegetables and fruits that are around." And I got kind of a charge out of her because her city's like 1,100 people, and one of the things I, that I had mentioned to everybody there is every city will be different in how they pattern their Farmers Market, depending on their area and their, their kind of the city that they are and that sort of thing, but this is a growing thing throughout our state, and so we're, we're kind of the lead dog in that, so I was pretty proud to be able to talk about that. Another thing at the AIC convention that we had is, for the first time ever, we had a mayor's roundtable and the city council roundtable. I was able to facilitate the mayor one, which I very much wanted to do and enjoyed it. There was 25 other mayors besides myself there, and we had great conversation in how to approach legislative concerns and be more proactive rather than reactive, and so I think this is going to be a fun thing for us as we go along. And the neat thing about both the mayors and the council workshops is we're going to have these two times a year, we're going to have them in the winter, as well as the summer convention, so I think that's a big deal for us, so we can get some of those things that concerns councils as well as cities. And the cities that were involved, I asked for names and where their city was and their population. We had anywhere from representative mayors of a 300 populous town to Meridian, who was right around 90,000. So we had a broad spectrum of ideas and talks, so it was pretty, pretty fun. I really enjoyed it.
Did you, did you find that even the small municipalities were fighting with the same situations that the big ones were?
Well, everybody, well, everybody's got issues. I'll give you one example, in the small town where they cannot have a police officer because they can't afford a police officer, they have to contract with the local sheriff's department to do police work, and, and, you know, there's issues with doing that, being able to get the type of coverage you need, Wayne. So every, the neat thing about it, well, I don't know, neat, you want to say neat, but the interesting thing about it is every city, whether you've got 300 residents or 90,000 residents, we all have issues that we have to deal with, and so that's just part of the nature of the beast. But anyway, it was a terrific conference, and I very much appreciated, of course, Gary Reeder and Jim Pivner, and Rod were there as well for separate things.
Another thing that, that went on there that I thought was quite important was the talk about economic development throughout the Western United States, and how the state of Utah in 2008, when interest rates got as low as they were going to get and construction costs got as low as they were going to get, they put some money on the table and bond financed and improved their infrastructure and improved their schools and did a lot of things with that, and, and now things, when things are on the upswing, they're getting a lot of leverage off of that. And we might want to consider, it's past the construction part of that, but definitely the interest rate part of that is still something we should consider now, maybe we should get some things done while interest rates are low.
It is cheap.
Yep. And then, of course, as noted by everybody, the Art Walk was June 12th. Our, we were late getting back into Moscow, it was almost 9 o'clock by the time I got, and it was, things were pretty well weaned down, and I guess it ran for a little bit longer, but the majority of it was pretty well over with by then, but it is a very, very successful event, so that's terrific. With that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just to pull off the Art Walk, those of you who haven't had a chance to come down and see the Ralph Crawford exhibit at City Hall, extraordinary exhibit, first time it's been exhibited, great bronzes and paintings and sculptures and something you don't see very often, that much talent in one place, so certainly invite people to do that. Down at the AIC, that was a great conference, has been reported on. I'm a member of two state associations, the Community Transportation Association of Idaho. We're currently going through some, some restructuring, so I spent a day-long retreat when I was in Boise with that group, and the Redevelopment Association of Idaho, which is, represents our urban renewal agencies around the state. Happy to say that we're well represented. The Redevelopment Association was instrumental in bringing a new level of education and knowledge to the state legislators during the legislative sessions last couple of years, and we were honored, our own Moscow Urban Renewal Agency was honored to be one of four urban renewal agencies around the state to give a presentation to AIC showcasing our projects in our district. So things are doing well. It's interesting, Jim talks about the Utah model, I've heard that presentation a few times, and it is a little bit, kind of at, at opposite odds where you actually go deeper into debt to spur the economy. So it's an interesting model, and a lot of people aren't sure it's the way to go, but I'm sure Idaho will be exploring it like everyone else. That's all I have.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion, the adjourn?
Consider yourself entertained.
Dan? Made the motion? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned, folks, at 7:36.